The School Board of the City of Manassas meeting is called to order. Will you please rise for a moment of silence? Mr. Hollingsworth, in celebration of Veterans Day and in honor of your service, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Seberg here. Vice Chair Stevens here. Mrs. Williams here. Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spall here. Mr. Igbal.
Here.
Mr. BP.
Here.
Ms. Ayman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Dr. Newman, are there any additions or corrections to agenda tonight?
Yes, Chair. I request that we move from the action agenda to finance operations contracts over 100,000 information technology from action to discussion.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for approval of the public meeting agenda this evening?
Chair, I move that we move the... Ah, thank you. I move that we modify... Ah, thank you. Okay. It's this one. Okay. I move that we modify the public media... Public meeting agenda.
Can I get a sec?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Spall, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford.
All right. Thank you, Chair Seberg. Good evening, other members of the board, and good evening to everyone that has joined us on tonight. I am here to present a few spotlights for you this evening, and I'm very excited to have some of our students here with us tonight. We will begin, first of all, with the boys' soccer team from Metz Middle School. They are here tonight with their coaches to be recognized for an incredible season. The Mustangs ended the Fall '22 season undefeated, giving them the first-place ranking in their division. This evening, we are celebrating a group of hard-working young men with a passion for soccer. Their coach said these boys were committed to come together as a team and ended up gaining a second family. So their coaches are here tonight. I'm going to ask our board members to come in, and Dr. Newman, to come join us at this time. I'm going to ask Coach Sarah Reinhardt and her assistant coach, Joseph Owusu, to come forward. They have done an amazing job with these young men, and so we want to commend them for such an awesome season. And so we want to congratulate the following players, and as I call your names, please come forward. Kyrian Avila. Owen Melendez. Diego Hernandez. Moises Olivares. Kevin Santos. Junior Oriana. David Hernandez. Diego Martinez. Shane McCusker. Anderson Osorio. Lionel LeMousse. Edgardo Suchete. Steve Chicas. Anderson Robles. Christopher Zamora. Steven Osorio. Moises Pareda. Ethan Perez. Partik...Patrick Miller. Dylan Araho. Sean Nijji...Nijji? Is that right? Nijji? Nijji, sorry. Sean Nijji. And Alexis Canessa. Again, these young men have gone undefeated. Okay. Luis Gutierrez is here as well, so we ask him to come forward. These young men have represented Metz Middle School and Manassas City Public Schools so well. Their coaches are extremely proud of them. The school district is proud of you. Thank you guys so much for doing such a great job. Congratulations.
Wait, you got another one coming. I know. But it's amazing that they get to...
All right, we have Chris up here now, so I got to get one more from you guys. Sorry. Okay, here we go. Yeah, yeah. That's great. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Look this way. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect. Next. Excellent.
Okay. Next, we move on to the high school. I'm going to ask this person to come down. Alexander Ramirez. Are you here? Yep, come on. Alexander Razander will be attending the Virginia Music Educators Conference in Richmond November 17 through the 19. He will work with a guest clinician alongside all other seniors from Virginia that made the Honors Choir. They will come together for a concert for the public, and we are just so very proud of the work that he's done, that he was selected for this very distinct honor. His choir director is Angela Easley, who is the Director of Choirs at Osborne. She could not be here tonight, but she is so very proud of the work that he's done and this wonderful accomplishment, and we are very proud of you too. So congratulations. This concludes our spotlights for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. Citizens' comments. This time, we welcome those who wish... Okay, thank you. This time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs. This time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the City of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. And first up, we have Carrie Davis.
We have to lower this. First, I wanted to speak on behalf of all the school board members. I feel like I know majority of you very well, and I have so much profound respect for all of you sitting up here, whether I was on youth football with some of you when the kids were little, or you've come out and supported the kids along the way. I know everything it takes and how hard it is to sit up there and how hard it is to do your job. And there are elections tonight, and I just want to point out how each and every one of you have done an amazing job supporting the community, and it is recognized and appreciated. I am here to talk about...I heard that there is a possibility of getting metal detectors at Osborne High School. I've been a parent here for 13 years. I think it's amazing. It would definitely ease some insecurities I think some parents have, honestly, across the nation. I feel like we could be the first school in the area to set a high president of security, and I think it's a great idea. So I'm just here as a parent expressing how important it is for me to be able to send my kids to school and know that there's one less thing I have to worry about that day. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak this evening? Anyone at all? All right, continuing on, Board Committee reports. Finance Committee from Mrs. Williams.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Chair. The Finance Committee met November 3, and we discussed three things. We went over the summary of revenue expenditures and the fund balance by fund and FYI...FYI, FYI, FY 2021-2022 actuals by fund, and we did that pre-audit. We went over the pre-audit in that meeting. We reviewed the draft five-year forecast, and we had a review of the student activity audit, and that's what we did during that meeting. It was great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Next up on our agenda tonight is a public hearing. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about the City of Manassas Public Schools' Capital Improvement Plan, or the CIP. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that the comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here, and we treat citizens' comments as a public hearing and do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comment should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please note that matters which are properly the subject of closed meetings, such as those related in the performance of school personnel or individual student concerns, may not be discussed during this time. Is there anybody that would wish to speak in regards to the public hearing? Mrs. Sarah Reinhardt?
Hi. I work at Metz, work with the soccer team. I understand we're getting a turf field possibly next school year, and I was wondering if that's going to happen over the summer, or is that something that's going to happen the following summer, because the field's pretty much used all 10 months of the school year? So...
Ms. Radford? We don't speak.
Right.
I can't. I'll get with you. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak about aspects of the public hearing for the CIP? May motion for the consent agenda?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Vice Chair Stevens at the School Board of the City of Manassas, approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next up on the discussion agenda, we have student achievement, proposed academic calendars for school year 2023 to 2024 and school year 2024 to 2025. Dr. Goldson.
Actually, that's probably pretty good for me right there. Good evening, Chair Seberg, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. Thank you for the opportunity to present for discussion our proposal and draft academic calendars for school year 23-24 and 24-25. The following slides and draft calendar dates are intended to illustrate our process and share the products of a group collaboration. I will take just a minute to preview the agenda for today in an effort to organize the discussion. First, I'm going to recognize and just share with you the members of the Academic Calendar Development Committee. This year, this was done as a group collaborative effort. I'll review our timeline and process, and then talk about our central topics of discussion. We created three options for your consideration, and I'll introduce those, talk about key features, some considerations, dates, and details. Then I'll have a side-by-side crosswalk to try to make sense of all of these options for you, and we'll compare major points and key features. Then I'm going to review some polling data. We put out a survey and a poll for our staff and community, and so we will look at the results of that poll, and then I'm going to talk about next steps. We're going to propose that the School Board consider adoption of these calendars at the December 13 meeting, and at that time, we'll update survey data for you. So the academic calendar development process is fundamental to the implementation of our strategic plan. Through the school calendar, we communicate our commitment to inclusive and collaborative practices and in learning environments. We forge strong community and family partnerships, and we create a quality workforce. This work was completed by a dedicated committee representing a cross-section of our school community, including teachers, parents, school administrators, and central office department representation. Our goal was to include many voices and diverse perspectives in the development of the process and in the development of the options. I want to thank each member of the Development Committee for their contributions and thoughtful commitment to the process. Members of the committee who are present tonight, if you could just stand. Thank you so much for your service. Our process began in September with an organizational meeting, and we continued to meet weekly, adding members throughout the process. The committee was able to participate synchronously through Zoom, or we were able to participate asynchronously through a feedback form process, and each week, we had a topic of discussion. These topics were identified by revisiting the feedback that we received in the fall of 2021 during our previous calendar adoption process. That dataset allowed us to really zero in and identify areas of concern and priorities for our staff and for our community. The comments and feedback were centralized around three main themes: start and end dates, holidays and observances, and the strategic use of professional time. As a committee, we discussed each topic in detail. We asked questions. We provided feedback that informed the development of three draft options. We shared the drafts with the Academic Committee in October and with our community and staff through a survey. This slide highlights the major points of discussion related to each theme. So when we talked about start and end dates, we talked about the later start. We talked about being consistent with neighboring school divisions. We talked about that May end date, and there was some discussion about keeping the first semester before winter break. Around the idea of holidays and observances, it was very difficult to decide how do we prioritize or choose a student holiday or an observance day? We talked about observances and introduction of content. We talked about observances and after-school activities and all of the things surrounding that discussion. And then we also talked about the placement of professional days, teacher workdays each quarter. That's been a big ask and a big part of the feedback that we've gotten from our staff. So we looked at teacher workdays after the end of each quarter, and then we looked for time for teachers to work collaboratively in support of our Manassas City Strategic Plan and the cycle that works. So, this evening, I will present to you three draft options for your consideration. Each option includes a calendar for school year 23-24 and school year 24-25. The options prioritize one of the key features, and I will refer to them by that descriptor moving forward to help us differentiate between the options. So Option 1 features a May end date, the last day for students in the month of May, and is very similar to the one that we are currently, our current academic calendar. Option 2 features a later August start and is aligned with our largest neighboring school division. And Option 3 features an extended winter break. So now we're going to take a closer look at the considerations that were made and the development of each option. So Option 1, that May end date for students. The key feature that May end date, the considerations and discussions around this option included graduation at the end of May and being out of school early in the summer. It's important to note that during our deliberations as a committee, we considered a different version of this option that had the end of the first semester before winter break. That version had a May end date, but it required a much earlier start for students and staff in order to provide 85 to 90 instructional days prior to that December break. That version was not selected by the committee to be included in the options presented today. So this chart highlights the key dates of the calendar that allow for students to be finished with school in May. And so it looks, we have a first day for teachers in 23-24 is August 7th, first day for students is August the 16th, and then for 24-25, that first day for teachers is August the 1st, and the first day for students is August the 12th. In keeping with the changes made by this board to the current academic calendar, this chart indicates the addition of four half-days to provide collaborative time for teachers. Teacher workdays placed strategically at the end of each quarter, and professional learning days continue to be a feature of November and January. So we wanted to continue with that, providing that half-day time for teachers to work together in their CLT. We thought it was important to put in for the first year of implementation and we...of a cycle that works, and we think it's important to continue that as well. Additionally, the committee proposes that Manassas City Public Schools will be closed for days that may be observed by members of our community. It's important to note that on some of the calendar options for 23 and 24 and then 24-25, some of the days that are proposed, actually, they don't fall on a weekday, so they're not included in our conversation or on our calendar. And those are indicated on this chart for each option. All right, so Option 2, the key feature is the later start date in August. The dates are closely aligned with our largest neighboring school division, and considerations for this option include academic opportunities for students like Governor's School, ROTC, and other special programming. There are community opportunities for summer programs, for recreation, and additional childcare options for summer. There are...there's increased time to fill last-minute vacancies created by that mid-June teacher resignation deadline that the state of Virginia has. June the 15th, right? June the 15th is the last day the teachers can resign in the state of Virginia. And so that later start date, the committee felt for our consideration for this version, was that it created a little bit more space between that day and the start date. It also allows for increased time for administrator training and onboarding of new staff. So the key dates of this calendar that allow for students to start the school year later in August, for 23-24, teachers would start on August the 10th, and the first day for students would be August the 21st. And in 24-25, first day for teachers is August 8, and the first day for students is August 19. Oh, I missed one. All right, so similarly to Option 1, this Option 2 created those four half-days for collaborative teacher time. There are teacher workdays placed strategically at the end of each quarter, and the professional learning days continue to be a feature in November and January. With Option 2, we continue our proposal that Manassas City be closed for days that may be observed by members of our community. And finally, the key feature of Option 3 is having an extended winter break. By extending the break to include three weekends, families may have the opportunity to travel. This option has a mid-August start to try to stay somewhat aligned with our neighboring school division. Considerations were discussed related to ensuring food security for some members of our community if we have this longer break. So the key dates of this calendar would be an August 8, first day for teachers, and an August 17, first day for students, and then in 24-25, an August 6, first day for teachers, and August 15, first day for students. And again, we have our four half-days for collaborative teacher time, teacher workdays each quarter, and professional learning days in November and January. And we propose, again, that Manassas City be closed for days that may be observed by members of our community. This chart is a summation of the key features and major points of comparison of all three options. Included in this chart are the dates, the start dates for teachers and students, the number of days for winter and spring breaks, and the last day for students and teachers. I think it's important to note that the Code of Virginia says that we need to have 180 instructional days for students, or 990 hours, and that really limits if we're talking about we're going to start school in August, and we're going to try to get out in May, at the end of May or in that vicinity. There's not a lot of wiggle room or options between that, right? There's, if you count up the weekends and we count up the breaks, so that's why you will see that these are really subtly different, the different options here. So now I'd like to share with you data and analysis from the poll that we shared with our staff and community. These numbers were updated as of noon today, November the 8th. The calendar poll was shared starting Friday, October the 28 via email. October the 28th via email, text, social media. We sent it out in newsletters and remind texts from the school. And the poll was added to the MCPS website and has been active since. As of November 8th, we had 1,417 responses, 735 parents, 641 staff, 106 students, and 29 that identified themselves as another, somehow related to our school division. You should note that respondents could be represented in multiple categories. That's why if you add up those bubbles of how many people responded, it doesn't actually equal 1417. In the poll, you can identify yourself as a parent and staff, right? Or as, you know, a student or other. So let's talk about our poll response rate. That was important to all of us, that we increase participation of our community. Efforts were made to improve the response rate over that of fall of 2021. There was a concerted effort to use multiple platforms to communicate to the public. Mr. Cuffeler and I met with our family liaisons to share information about the survey in an effort to partner with them in their work. As of today at noon, we had 870 community responses resulting in a 15% response rate. This is an increase of eight percentage points over the fall of 2021. Similarly, we saw an increase in staff responses. They had a 52% response rate. And that's an increase of 14 percentage points over the fall of 2021. So progress, not where we want to be. We will continue to reach out in different ways to our community, but I think we're pleased that we had more than double. Respondents were asked to rank the three proposed calendar options to indicate their first, second, and third-choice preference. The option was assigned a statistically-weighted score based on how the respondents ranked the three options. There was no clear favorite that emerged from the polls so far. Overall, the rankings have Option 1 with the highest weighted score. And just to remind you, that's the one with the May end date. But it's only slightly higher than Options 2 and 3. Some different patterns emerged across our groups. Respondents who identified as parents ranked Option 2 as their number-one preference. Respondents who identified as staff ranked Option 1 as their number-one preference. Respondents were also asked to identify the top two factors contributing to their rankings. The factors corresponded to the key features of the options. For Option 1, with that May finish, people really were very supportive of the early finish. They liked the early start. And they provided 156 written comments. Respondents preferring Option 2, that later start, were looking for us to be aligned with our neighboring jurisdictions. And they just like having the later start in August. They provided 135 written comments. Respondents preferring Option 3, the longer winter break, that's what they wanted, a longer winter break. And there was no clear second factor. It was like, that's what we want. And they have 69 written comments. So what now? Next steps for our process is that we would like to leave the calendar poll open until early December. We will continue to reach out to our community through text, email, social media, and school newsletters and remind. Then we will provide updates to the school board ahead of our request for a calendar adoption on December the 13th. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share information. And we would happily clarify our process or answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Goldsung. And thank you to you and the committee for the consideration of these options. And I do appreciate the format it was presented in. So thank you for that. Questions for Dr. Goldsung? Mrs. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you, Dr. Goldsung. On Slide 12, it talks about with the earlier start date, how academic opportunities are impacted. With the earlier start date, I'm just going back to that slide so I can see it. With that earlier start date, what has the impact been on those? Because like Governor's School, ROTC, special programming, and students with disabilities, what's...
When our neighboring school division that we have collaborative relationships with for academic programming, when they start later than we do, our children are in a position where they need to wait to begin engaging in that academic material until that program's open.
What do they usually do during that time? Because what, is it a week, two weeks?
It's about two weeks. So we're working with them locally to prepare for that program and get them ready to engage with that content.
And then they're still in school, like gov-school, they're still in gov-school after everybody else gets out?
I believe so. No?
No.
Nope, we're done. We end our calendar and they're done. I'm going to ask Mr. Masiak to come and give you some details.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Good evening. I just wanted to speak towards our students with disabilities. So we do share students with Prince William County for our low-incidence disabilities. And for our kids, it's really a four-week swing. So they're waiting two weeks to start school. And then they're getting out two weeks later than their peers. And oftentimes, that does have a little bit of impact on attendance when their peers are out. Of course, we provide everything we need to provide, you know, transportation and all those things. But when we don't align, that does impact our students with disabilities with low incidences that are served in Prince William County.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Any other questions?
You have a question? I have, I do have a question, or perhaps clarification. Last, last calendar development we did, there was a whole different option with less days off. And I realize it's not observing all of the holidays for many of our families. If I remember correctly, there was, there was a 75% approval rate for that plan. Was there any discussion to even present that plan?
To present a calendar without all of the addition of days? We discussed it. And we decided that it was, that it was very difficult for us to prioritize one day over another, one holiday over another, one observance over another.
Okay. Alright, now the reason why I'm asking that question is because perhaps that's why these are so close, closely aligned. Has there ever been any discussion at all about as, as we progress through our education, as we change and we progress, shortening summers? So our high schoolers, they're, they're, I realize it may only be a week or two, but then they're not working that extra week to save money for college. Has there ever been any discussion about that?
That was not a topic that we considered, but I think that we could add a bullet under community opportunities would be employment for students. That's just not, that wasn't something that we talked about in the committee.
Alright, I was just curious if you...
Well, I think we add it to our list of things that we need to consider when we're developing these calendars. Absolutely.
Yeah, because it's interesting how close these align.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you.
Ms. Williams, can I answer your first question? Last year during the calendar discussion at the board level, we were directed to ensure that all of those observances were included in the options. So they were just following orders?
Yeah, and I do, I remember, I remember discussing that.
I will just note that we did the, the data analysis is just a little different this year in that we do have that Option 1 when we aggregate all of the groups together. Option 1 does sort of take a small margin, a small lead. I don't know that we had the ability last... So we reported last year as an aggregate. And this year, we've shared some aggregate information with you, but we've also been able to dig a little deeper into that data and show you some trends within those reporting groups or those, those voting groups.
Chair. Mrs. Fall?
I do believe I was one of the people that asked to only see a calendar that had, that was a little bit more inclusive last year. But I have also noticed some neighboring jurisdictions that have had a lot of inclusivity regarding calendar changes. And it seems to me like we have done more right than wrong this year because we haven't been out nearly as much at daycare and things like that. So I applaud you and I thank everyone for making some inclusions. And I think that's definitely the right step. But I do appreciate you being judicious about what we're choosing. And I know that's not easy.
I have to thank, again, the Calendar Development Committee because these decisions are better made by a group coming to consensus with diverse perspectives.
Alex, did you have any comments about the survey responses? Is that something you'd like to comment on?
I'm happy to see the survey responses over double as high as they were last time. I think maybe we should look at other means of delivery when it comes to the survey to further increase that response rate. I think in the meantime, delaying our vote until after we analyze the data in December is probably the right move. And yeah, so I think there's just something to be said about double the response rate. I'm really happy to see that. So thank you for all your work you've done to make that happen.
You're welcome. It was, again, it's the work of the committee. It's the work of the people at the schools. So if the public is paying attention to us tonight, I hope you are watching this presentation. And please know that poll is going to be open and the link can be found right there on our MCPS homepage.
Ms. Chair, I have one more question.
Sure.
May I? When, I don't think now's the appropriate time necessarily, but I, is there an opportunity we will have as a board to see, kind of lump the comments together to see what...
Yeah, I can share those with you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be great, thank you.
And I just wanted to comment, when we first made the decision to move the school calendar to end the first semester at winter break, I was on the board then and it was, it was so neck and neck, what we should, what should we do? And the school board decided to go ahead and end the first semester, you know, at winter break. And I do appreciate you explaining why that can't be done.
There were, that was a big discussion the day that we had that. Because we had four options as a group. And that was the, and then we did some weight-voting ourselves and talked about why ultimately we didn't put that ahead. And we informed, we looked at, again, the addition of 85 to 90 instructional days before that. And I think it's like December the 20th. I mean, that's, you've got to really back it up. But then we also looked at our data. What is our, what is our great, what are the fall SOLs? What does that look like? What, so we tried to root and ground these decisions, not just in our own feelings personally and professionally, but we looked throughout our division for data that would support these decisions one way or the other.
And I wanted to comment on the survey also. I know for myself personally, I'm going to lean pretty heavy on that, the survey results for making my decision when it comes to a vote because that's why we asked the surveys, is we want to know what people think. And, you know, different people will have different decisions. And we're not going to be able to make everybody happy. But I really appreciate the amount of staff that has answered the survey. It's obviously very important to many people. And so please, please pass that along too. So this will come up to us on the 13th.
Yes, ma'am.
And you'll give us an update on the figures? So I hope that families and staff will continue to answer. And maybe we'll get closer to that 100% and feel...
We're going to leave it open for you.
That's awesome, that's great.
Please take our survey.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Goldsung.
Thank you.
Alright, let me get back to our agenda here. Okay, our action agenda item was, oh, we need to discuss that. We've moved it to the discussion agenda. And that is contract over 100,000. And we need to discuss approving an award to UVA Contract to Award Alliance Technology Group for the provision of four equipment leases for Evolve Express lanes with situational awareness cameras, including installation and maintenance services for Osborne High School. Price for the leased equipment, annual recurring and non-recurring fees are reflected below, or on our agenda for, by the fiscal year, for a four-year total of $435,735.39. The first year being $123,368.60. And we move this to, back to the discussion agenda because we're finding that we have a lot more questions. So I'd like to hear those questions. And then we'll have staff follow up and so we can make a decision in the future. Questions? Mrs. Fall?
Well, I'd like to say that, I mean, at the 30,000-foot view, I love the idea of protecting our teachers and our students. It's, it's something that's very important to me. And I was very excited about, as one of our speakers said, you know, being a leader in the area in this. But I do have a problem, the more I think about it granularly, about what it looks like when a child gets pulled aside for something that may be an error and what that does to that child, especially if they're disproportionately, you know, people of color. So I want to say that from my experience over this last year, we do not have a gun problem at Osborne or at Manassas City Public Schools. We do have a nationwide mass shooting problem. There's no question about it. But I would like to go over and understand better the exact process for detaining a child and, you know, do a little bit more research that I've heard recently as of today about a school-to-prison pipeline data on gun detectors in schools and, you know, how that impacts kids for a longer, possibly for their lifetime. And question whether the money is better spent on programs for disenfranchised kids, which are largely the people that come back to do harm in schools. So I just want to clarify, for me, I'm happy to have this delayed because I do not think that we have a problem in our schools. And so I don't want it to look like we do. I think, you know, I'm looking to keep bad guys out. And I just, in my excitement for this contract, which I was excited about it, I'm worried about the day-to-day.
I can appreciate that. And Mr. Hawkins, I know that we had the video at the last presentation. The video kind of showed what that process was.
Yes, and I was thankful to have that. It's just, in the last two weeks, I haven't had a lot of time to do really any research. So I just feel unprepared for such a big decision.
That's fine, we've already decided to table it. So what information can we provide at the next meeting that will answer some of your questions for you?
Well, one of my questions hypothetically is how much it might cost to close in the hallway from Osborne to Johnson Learning Center, which is actually really a security breach, and how much of that money could go, this money that we would appropriate could go to something that I, I feel is a bigger fix. And then just for my own knowledge to know what some kind of comps look like. This, I believe it's been presented to us as a really good deal, but I just don't know. That, I don't know the numbers myself.
Alright, what other questions do we have?
Alright, does anybody else have any questions? Because I have a lot. Not a lot of questions, not a lot of questions, but...
Go ahead, Mrs. Williams.
You go first.
I, I just have a couple. And Mr. Hawkins, you may be the person who can answer them. And I hate to put you on the spot. I'm sorry to do that. So...
Yeah, let's take the questions.
Alright, so you don't have to answer any questions yet. But I think there were some questions that came up related to work that would have to be done to the physical space within the school where the detection devices were going to go.
So it, we're not going to have to make
So it, we're not going to have to make any building structural changes. So the, the devices will be sitting just inside the front door at Osborne, both at the auditorium entrance and at the main entrance and on the west wing entrance and at the Johnson Center entrance in the foyer areas. Um, all we really have to do is be able to provide enough electricity, run electricity to those devices. There's not any uh, technology problem. They will, will not be running off of our servers or our system at all. They'll be running off of the same type of service that your cell phone runs off of. So um, we don't have any technological issues. Uh, our facilities and maintenance staff believe that we have enough um, available electricity in those areas to run those devices. And there are no, there are no attachments or, or building structural changes that would have to be made to accommodate these devices.
Okay, um, so when we look at this total price tag of four thirty-five, seven thirty-five, thirty-nine, that's going to be the full price tag for four years. No additional costs added in or unknown costs at this point?
That's what the contract is for. Yes, we, we have a binding, well, if we were agreed to this, we'd have a binding contract for that amount of money.
And then when we do take a vote on this and let's say we vote in favor, what is the turnaround time, if you know, to getting these installed and?
Approximately six weeks period of time. We might be able to get it earlier than that. Uh, uh, we, we pressured the vendors and what's the earliest you could get it, what's the worst case? Said the earliest would be three weeks late, the uh, worst case would be six weeks.
Okay. And then going back to our conversation two weeks ago when we, when it was first introduced, the, we've approved funding for four additional security personnel. And one of their tasks will be to, for lack of a better term, man the Evolve devices, correct?
They will assist us.
They will assist. And then will they be interacting with our students? Or will it be school staff interacting with students?
Well, we believe that it would be better for, for the students to be interacting with people that they know and they've recognized. I mean, whether it be an assistant principal, a dean, a counselor or teacher, someone like that. So uh, we would do our best to have um, a staff member be interacting with the students.
Okay. And this is a question you may not have an answer to, and I don't know if there is an answer. Is there specific training or recommended training for how staff should interact with students? We're talking as young as fourteen, going through these devices to ensure that A, it's not a traumatic experience because we have all different kinds of kids coming into our building. You know, our students with disabilities are going to be coming through that building and is going through a device like this something that's going to be upsetting for them in the first place? So, you know, I want to ensure that if we install these, that our staff is understanding and sensitive to the needs of our specific population. And I don't know whether there's training involved in that because we want to assure, this is about not just physical health, health and wellbeing. This is about emotional health of students and want to ensure that we do this one hundred percent correctly and that we don't unintentionally inflict any harm. I mean, I think we can, personal opinion, but.
Nobody wants to inflict trauma onto our students, okay? And we're going, you know, the device will identify a particular area, whether it's a book pack or on your, or a particular place on the, on the student's person of where uh, it detected um, a possible weapon of some sort, okay? So they will be moved over if they are identified as having, uh, as a, as a hit on the machine. They will go over to a resolution table and whomever is there, whether it be a teacher, a counselor, assistant principal, dean, someone there will assist the student in being able to search that particular area to make sure that we don't have any weapons entering into our school. You know, it's um, all of us are scanned when we go through um, different major events or if you go to any big stadium or whatever, they're scanned all the time. I, I don't know whether or not it would be traumatic to a student for this to occur. Um, you know, it's also important to note that this, this is another level of security. It's not going to be the answer to everything. It's not going to be a hundred percent effective, uh, but it will help in deterring um, possible weapons in our school. And if students do bring weapons to school, it, it's a better chance for us detecting them and eliminating them from our, from our schools.
And so, it, thank you very much, Mr. Hawkins. You, you know how I am. Sometimes my questions come up in my head as you answer questions. You know, I just want us to be able to ensure, you know, the privacy of students who were pulled aside. Um, just as a personal story, since nine eleven, every time I fly, I get pulled for secondary screening because of where I was born. Um, and my bags get completely emptied. And I'm an adult and it happens every time. But it's still embarrassing and it's still upsetting and I still get angry over it because there really isn't a whole lot of privacy and people know why I'm being pulled over. And you, you know, they know, they're watching my bag get emptied out. Sometimes there's a dog that's sniffing my bags and that's an embarrassing thing. And, you know, I'm an adult and I'm used to it, but imagine being a fourteen-year-old and you're just going to school. So, so, you know, I, I want to ensure that, that we're taking care of our students' privacy, but I one hundred percent understand that extra layer of security for our students because they're our number one priority.
Yeah, I don't know whether, I don't know whether we'll ever be able to have a situation where it'll be, you'll be going into a private room where nobody will be able to see you and where you'll be searched. It's, you know, our buildings are not set up in that, in that format. There's always going to be um, some identific, identification of a student who's being pulled to the side, just like it is when you go through the air, uh, airport or some other secured area. So um, but we have to weigh whether the best interest for the school division as a whole or the school population as a whole. Is it worth it to have, to have better security? Or, and maybe have um, some student be uncomfortable uh, for, for a period of time or not? I don't, I don't know. That um, you know, that's, that's the trade-off that we're at right now.
Right. And, and we don't have a lot of history to go back to, to look at this.
No, we don't. You know, and, you know, we don't have a lot of, this is something, you know, this is not a metal detector. We're trying to move uh, as many students through. We have to get two, over two thousand kids in in fifteen minutes worth of period of time. This is the least intrusive thing that we could move that many students in. You know, some school districts have metal detectors and they warn students when they go through. It would take us a lot longer than fifteen minutes to get two thousand students in. So this is the least intrusive method that we have right now for students to be able to come through freely. You know, um, with the least amount of trauma that we can, we can provide uh, with the technology that's available at this time.
Thank you. I, I appreciate your taking the time and I appreciate your thought. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I just also want to, you know, talk about, you know, closing in of Osborne or joining those buildings. You know, that's going to be a significant effort, you know, a significant amount of money. If the school board wants to go down this, this process road, we're going to have to have some meetings to talk about the scope. How big a building are we, what are we talking about? Are we talking about a closed-end walkway? Or are we talking about actually joining the two buildings together? What type of classrooms are going to be in there? We'll have to have some sort of design before we can come up with some estimated cost. And it all depends on the scope of what the board would like to have for us to determine how much it's going to cost to do those sorts of things. Um, and the, you know, the architectural and engineering fees will, will have to be paid for prior to us getting that cost. And it's something that we can explore. I want to say that, but I, you know, uh, that, this, this is something that's not in our C I P. It's not in our five-year plan. And if that's a change that we need to make, then we need to make it, okay? And, and make that a priority for some, us to look into.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes. Um, yeah, you're right. And that, that, that discussion of closing in that area may be forced upon us sooner than later anyway. And I think you all know what I'm talking about. If we don't get appropriated the funds to purchase eighty-seven, a hundred, uh, center, center rail road. Anyway, so I, I, I do want to say truly appreciate Dr. Newman, Mr. Hawkins and staff for bringing this really to, to us because it is, it's a matter of safety and it's, and it's extremely important conversation. Um, and staying ahead of the curve is probably a, a smart thing, smart conversation to have. But to Mrs. Spall's point, we don't have, we don't have such a guns and weapons problem um, at the moment. So I wanted, I just wanted to point out that in our last meeting, we approved Allied Universal Security Officers to assist us in our truancy issue and students leaving campus and just trying to hone in on our students being where they're supposed to be. Um, so some of that will need to be, need to be just kind of re-managed to manage these scanners. Um, I don't know if this is an option, but I, I know we have a safe and healthy school advisory committee. Perhaps it makes sense for them to review the human elements rather than this technology. Um, because I think fostering relationships and perhaps maybe a trauma-informed care approach might be more impactful for us, for the city of Manassas Public Schools. Um, but what I'm finding is there's little hard evidence to suggest that safety technologies have really prevented or mitigated catastrophic, I'm sorry, cata, catastrophic school events. According to a two thousand sixteen report on school safety technology by researchers at John Hopkins University. They just can't really find any hard evidence that it really helps a whole lot. All right. In reference to Evolve, um, I found some information about the system itself. Despite promises of line-free and seamless scanning, the rollout in some schools were just a mess. Currently, the reality is that weapons of mass instruction is what they're calling it, set off almost every child as they walk through, uh, one principal said. Security experts consulted by the district after the botch rollout warned that school systems, there is no magic to any of these proposed fixes and the easiest thing to do would be to tell students to just get there earlier. So extend the lines to try to get them through, um, get them through these scanners. The statistical evidence that Evolve's scanners made schools safer was weak. During the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, thirty guns were found on school campuses by means other than Evolve scanners compared to uh, one detected by, only one was detected by the scanner. Um, this might suggest that measure, measures such as anonymous tip systems through perhaps a smartphone app might be more effective. Uh, Charlotte, a, a school district in Charlotte McKellinburg, their staff and students have responded to the installation of body scanners to, to, Mrs., I'm not sure who's, somebody mentioned this earlier, that it does overwhelmingly have a positive manner, that some students really do feel safer, staff does feel safer. Um, so that is something we do need to, to take into consideration. And that's one, I really appreciate Mrs. Davis coming and speaking to us because that is who I really want to hear from, are our parents, are our students. Um, I'd love to hear their opinions. And I know we've, last time we talked about this, I asked that people please reach out to us and give us their thoughts and opinions. And I really haven't heard any. I don't know if anybody else has. But now we have opportunity to hear from you again, so please reach out to us. We listen. So people do feel safer if they're here. On January twenty-first, first, a, a purchasing agent for a school district spoke to a student services officer in Spartanburg, South Carolina School District, which has used Evolve scanners since two thousand nineteen, seeking to find out more about Evolve scanners. The reference was not really a glowing one. The next question, are, are you receiving anonymous alerts for items like keys and phones? You know, anything these kids have in their backpacks isn't making these scanners go off. Phones and keys were not a menace as to traditional, they are menaces to traditional metal detectors, but not the scanner. Um, they did report that three-ring binders do hit a lot, laptops will hit a lot. And so the school was really taking twenty-five percent of students that are trying to get through these scanners and pulling them out to search them. Um, when they, the setting has to be low enough to really truly detect a Glock pistol. Um, but it's, then what's happening is it's just detecting so many other things. And these are, these are instances and documentation from other, other school districts. So we need to really think about what this looks like as students are coming in and getting, we can't keep pulling kids out of line for what purpose, to what end? What is our rate of return on these things? So I appreciate that we did put this in the discussion agenda instead of just making a decision quickly on this. And that's all I have, but I really, of course, I have a lot more. There's a lot more. And there, the government, the United States Government Accountability Office, it has a great study on, on school shootings, guns in schools. So uh, that's a good thing to take a look at for, for you guys. It's a resource, resource as well. Um, my colleagues here, if you want to take a look at that. Um, but I, I think we need to really think this through. I'm, I'm, we need to have our kids in the classroom. We can't have them tardy, late, they can't get in the classroom in the mornings because of a scanner. Is that really worth, is that worth doing right now? Perhaps this is something might, we might want to consider later. But thank you for your time.
So um, you'll share that research with us and then were there any questions that you want staff to follow up on? Which ones would you like them, what, any other?
I, I just, is, is the experience that, that these other school districts are having with these scanners, is that, are these correct? If you go to YouTube, you will see other videos of these students coming through. They have to pull their laptops off. They have to hold them up here and walk through the scanner and they're going in one by one. It's very different than what the video is that they showed us the other day. So what, what's correct? That's, that would be my only question.
So they do, um, there will be some training that will have to go and, and changes in behavior of the students when they come in, right? There's going to be um, a different way. They're going to suggest to them that they have their backpack in their hands and maybe their laptop. Because it will, if it hits the laptop, if you got your laptop in your bookbag, it's going to hit on the bookbag maybe, depending on the type of laptop that you have. If it's a Chromebook, it's not going to hit on the Chromebook, but it will maybe on your laptop. So if you walk in with your laptop and your bookbag in your hand and you're, they're scanning you, your chances of going through uh, unscathed are, are better, right? If it hits on your laptop, they know that that's what it is. You won't even stop at the resolution desk, okay? But you know, if it hits on your backpack or it hits on your person, then you'll have to go to the resolution desk. But we have to determine what the sensitivity level is that we find acceptable uh, to go through, whether it's full bore or, or, or lower, you know? And if we have, one of the good things about this system is that if we have a, what we have, we see something in social media about tomorrow at Osborne, we're going to have this issue. We can set the sensitivity level way high and we can be searching more and more kids so that we can provide more emotional assurance to our staff and our students and our parents that we have done our due diligence and we're trying to help and protect them. You know, no system is going to be perfect. No system is going to be great, you know, a hundred percent. We're not there technology-wise yet in, in, with this. Not going to be able to walk through and it's going to hit a hundred percent of the time, be correct, that it's nothing or there is something. And there are going to be some inconveniences that occur with staff and students when they come in. We have to figure out what we can accept and what we can't accept as we go through. Uh, so um, you know, additionally, the first week or so, we're going, is going to be a learning experience for us until we figure out what level of acceptance that we can handle with students walking in. Being able to get people, I agree with you. It's not acceptable to have kids coming in late and where kids not being able to go to school. We have to figure out where, how we're going to process that many students. We have to figure out where, how we're going to process that many students coming through and for them to get to school, into their classroom, be able to eat breakfast in the morning and function normally. And we'll have to set that level of security to meet those needs.
Mr. Hawkins, is there an option where we could actually see it?
Probably so, yes. I can ask the vendor to bring a device.
Would you be interested in that, Mrs. Williams?
Well, my, my next question was going to be, is there, are there any local school districts that have one of these scanners?
So the, the closest one is in, I'm trying to think of the name of the county, but it's in, it's in Maryland. I mean, we could go to Maryland.
Maryland's close.
Yeah, we could do that.
Wish I, Dorchester, Dorchester, Maryland. It's where, it's in Dorchester County, Maryland.
It's a very, this is very, very difficult, and, and it's very difficult for me. It really is.
So if y'all would like to take a trip to go and, and see one in person, or maybe we can ask the vendor to bring them a device here to us, we could ask them to do that as well.
Well, I think it would be more, maybe I'm wrong. Tell me what everybody thinks. But if we saw it working at a school that has been using it for a while, just so we kind of see how it is, because obviously there's going to be some backlog at the beginning. And it's going to take a little longer to get through a routine. But if we were able to see a school that has been in the routine and has been through this process, would, what, what do you guys think? Mrs. Williams?
Yeah, yeah. I, I just can't stop, we can't stop kids just because they have a three-ring binder in their backpack. I mean, it just, maybe those kind of things need to, I need to know if that's really truly occurring or not. So I think that would be helpful.
If you'd like, we can, we can try to set up a field trip to Dorchester and we'll talk to, and you'll be able to talk to the principal, the people there who are actually running it and find out what their experiences are.
I think that would be helpful.
Might be helpful to all of you.
So I just checked Apple Maps. Dorchester County's two and a half hours away from here. So maybe if that's not doable, we could maybe do some sort of Zoom with them and have the vendor bring one of the, for lack of a better term, devices for us to see if we can't
Sure.
do that trip.
Sure.
Mrs. Williams, are you, are you done?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Okay. Mrs. De, Mr. Beepe, I have not forgotten about you. Did you have a question or a comment?
Just a comment that I want, just a comment that I wanted to make. I guess from the student perspective, just thinking about these different types of security measures, I feel like even though I'm not necessarily a person I would consider to be anxious, I feel like if I were to walk into school one day and see one of these devices, you know, sitting in front of the doors and not really even knowing what was going on and just seeing people pass by, people being pulled to the side, I feel like it is something that needs to be taken into consideration. Because I guess if or when these measures are ended up, do end up being put in place in the school systems, I think one thing that needs to be made sure of is that we have things like mental health services, counselors, and all of those things in place and make sure that they're strong and readily available. Because I know there are a lot of students that, even though I don't know all the students' perspective on this topic, because I know a lot of them don't know necessarily about this issue as of right now, there are probably a lot of students that do feel that same way. So that was just something I wanted to talk about. Thank you.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hawkins, but we're not looking to have a sting operation here, right? I mean, the families are going to know what to expect. Students would know what to expect if we decide to pursue this.
If we were to decide to do this, it would be an extensive, for lack of a better term, PR campaign to let our students, our parents, and everybody know what we're doing, okay? We don't want to, we're not trying to surprise anybody. We're not going to wake up one morning and they're there and they don't know that it's happening, all right? We don't want the weapons to be able to come into our school. We don't want to pull twenty-five or any student out of the line, right? So we want everybody to be prepared when they come in that, that first day, okay?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just, Mrs. Brooks.
Oh, real quick, I was just going to say thank you, Mr. Hawkins. I didn't realize you had a question yet. So, but thank you, and then, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for all of this information and for even, you know, bringing this, this to us. Because that is one thing I know we all want to do is make sure our schools, our students, you know, that everyone is, is safe. The only thing that I really, you know, have a concern with was that, you know, when I asked about the, you know, the effectiveness, you know, I feel like the things that, that would maybe get through, you have to put it up so high to get an actual gun that you're getting, you know, spiral notebooks. But when it's down lower, then the minor things can get through that are still issues of children's safety, student's safety. But my biggest thing is I really would like to look at doing, you know, some sort of comprehensive assessment of our school security vulnerabilities to include this item. But also, as Ms. Spall pointed out, you know, if we wanted to close in, you know, that, that walkway, just, you know, cameras, alarms, et cetera. But I would really like us to be able to do a comprehensive analysis either through a special committee or the school safety committee. If we do need to get, yeah, the one we have. If we do need to get this Johnson Building thing started, then we would get it onto the, you know, sooner than later.
I think, I'm sorry, I know Chief Keen did a safety audit. And I don't know if that kind of information was included, that some of that may, information we may have.
I didn't see it.
I do know, sorry, I'm eating a Chutsey Whule. I do, I forgot how sticky they are. I do know that some of the information from the audit could not be shared because
It's safety.
security, safety issue. So it's possible we already have some of that information.
Right. But then, to then take that information and address, you know, prioritize the different items that we have that could affect the safety.
Thank you. Mr. Ickball?
Hi. Sorry, I, I was just writing down some thoughts on this while we were talking about it. And this is something that I was thinking about last time too, when the company representative was here. And also it sort of falls under the umbrella of like the student perspective as Mrs. De Beepe was discussing. So I just want to read it, just to put it out there. So I have some concerns about data privacy as it relates to the system they're offering. So if I remember correctly, the company rep from Evolve mentioned that the detection system utilizes an artificial intelligence algorithm in order to materially improve the system and make it more robust. I'm hesitant to vote on this before I understand what data they're storing about detection incidents and if that data is accessible to other customers. So I don't want data being stored in a company server, which includes a video of one of our students being pulled aside and searched and what region of their body was searched and detected by the system. And so if we're able to opt out of sharing our data with the company to improve the algorithm, I think I'd feel a bit more comfortable with this. So I like the security the system offers, but I want to be sure that we protect the privacy of our students as well. I think this question would be probably better suited to the representative from Evolve. So if we could follow up with them on that, I'd, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Any other questions before we, it comes to us in a future meeting? Mr. Hollingsworth?
I was feeling left out. Thanks to the shoe bomber, we all take our shoes and belts off every time we get on the airplane. We, we've adapted. I thought this was a no-brainer. And I really appreciate your insight and your questions to look at things a little closer. But an extra layer of security is, is something that I desire. And to make sure every student is protected is something I definitely look forward to. I see, I look at this, this whole thing from, from the faculty's perspective and having a little bit of, you know, that extra layer of protection. And so I'm in support and I, I'll drive two hours if we need to go look at something. But I appreciate all of your input and insight on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Last call. Okay, if, if we do think of something else, we'll let Dr. Newman know. And we look forward to an update at a future meeting. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Next up is board member comments. Mr. Beepe, do you have any comments this evening?
Uh, yes. First, I would like to say congratulations to the Mets soccer team on their great season. And I would also like to congra, give congratulations to all of ours' fall sports and from all throughout the district on their great seasons. And I would also just like to say good luck to all of those who are currently trying out for different sports like winter track, basketball, and cheer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beepe. Mrs. Spall?
Yes, thank you. I would like to congratulate Xander on his music pursuits. And I would like to also congratulate Mets Boys Soccer on their accomplishments. Thank Mr. Beepe for her insightful nod to fall sports and tryouts. And thank everyone who voted today.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Mrs. Williams?
Oh, good. I wasn't looking at the list, so I wasn't sure when I was next. Thank you. I, yeah, I just want to thank everybody for your presentations, calendar, the Evolve scanner. I, it's a lot of work to, to implement, meet, have committee meetings, discussions, compare our calendar to other schools, because I think that is truly very, very important. It's a lot of work and I really appreciate it. I think we all do up here. I really also want to appreciate Mrs. De Beepe for always having the confidence to, to just kind of butt in to our conversations. And I don't mean butt in in a negative way. I mean, I'm so glad you're aggressive and you do that because your insight and what you bring to this table is important. And what you say to me, like the way you might feel if, if these scanners are installed, it makes me think. And it, it's going to be a part of any decision I make. So I want to thank you for that, that confidence you have. I think that, that, I think that's also a testimony to this great school district that we're teacher, trying to teach our kids to advocate for themselves and, and be confident. So I want to thank everybody and I want to get, wish everybody good luck from our elections tonight. I guess we're going to find out soon what, what, what the outcomes are going to be. But I appreciate what everybody does and, and I appreciate everything, all your insights. They're wonderful. And thank you for your input tonight because it was exactly what I, I really wanted to hear what you all thought. So I want to thank you for those comments. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Hollingsworth?
I, I'm just going to echo Ms. Williams' comments. Thank you. I empathize. With all the hard work that you guys put into making these presentations, it's extremely helpful. But it doesn't make the decision-making any easier. So I just want to say thank you and I appreciate everybody on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Brooks?
I also want to say congratulations to Xander and the Mets soccer team. I mean, all, watching all of the students in our, in our district work so hard. But they worked really hard and it was nice to see them congratulated. I do look forward to hearing more feedback about the calendar. And I hope that we can really get some feedback about the Evolve system. And I look forward to delving into that more. And it would really be nice to be able to go and see. So I look forward to, to being able to see it in action and, and to see what our parents feel about the calendar choices and staff. And thanks, everyone, for everything you're doing to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Vice Chair Stevens. Mr. Ickball?
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, good evening, everyone. I just want to echo my fellow board members' comments in congratulating our boys' soccer team at Mets and coaches Osu. and Reinhardt on an awesome season. And also congratulations, Xander, for making Honors Choir. And I hope he has a lot of fun at his event with the VMEA. And I also want to thank everyone for their presentations tonight. I'm really happy with the calendar choices compared to last year's. And one of the things that I didn't mention earlier was the inclusivity aspect of it. One of the things that I felt that the calendars last year was lacking a bit is, was with the holidays and being inclusive. And I've, I've seen a great improvement this year in the proposed calendar options. So thank you for all the work you're doing for this. It's really appreciated. And I'm really looking forward to look at the data again when we get that. And yeah, I hope everyone voted today and I hope everyone has a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ickball. Vice Chair Stevens?
The fact that Xander Ramirez is, has the accolades required just goes to point out that we are a blue ribbon performing arts school and how amazing our performing arts department is. So I am very excited for Mr. Ramirez. And of course, we are really becoming a soccer powerhouse. In getting to talk to our Osborne soccer coaches last year, we really got to hear how these kids, starting at Mets, become a family. And that those kids who we saw tonight are probably still going to be playing together for another four, five, maybe even six years. And they know each other and they're family and they take care of each other. And it's just, it's really so great to see that. That's part of what makes being on school board special, is getting to see our kids and getting to see the amazing things that they do and the talents and the skills that they bring to us and, and the really bright futures that they have. And, and I wanted to address, you know, student safety and school safety. Even five years ago, we never would have thought about weapon detection technology. It was something we would have said, no, no, that's never going to happen. We're never going to need that. But here we are having an in-depth, very deep discussion on something this important because our students and our staff, their safety is a top priority, their physical safety, their mental safe, healthy, mental health, excuse me. And this is not going to be an easy decision for any of us. At first, when I saw the presentation, I was like, this is a no-brainer. But then in thinking about it and talking to Dr. Newman, talking to everyone here, there really are a lot of pieces. And we have to put those pieces together properly to make this work to the best it can to protect our students, to keep them safe, but to keep them mentally healthy in this endeavor. So I, I think we're all thinking deeply about this and look forward to hearing more from on Evolve technology and hopefully be able to come back with a decision the next time we meet. So thank you very much. We appreciate the input and everyone's insight and thoughts.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. And I'm just going to close it out with, I hope that more parents and more staff members will respond to the survey. You know, I had mentioned that years ago when we changed to have the first semester ending at winter break, that was a really big change and it was a really big step. And it was something that nobody else around us had been doing. But things change and other things become more important to us. And we're really leaning into the survey a lot more. And I appreciate that, that we're getting that feedback. So the more people that respond, the better it will be. I also want to thank my fellow school board members for the lively conversation and discussion tonight. Thank you. It makes it, it's, it's better to kind of hear what other questions there are and what are the things we should be considering. It makes us a stronger board. So we can make better decisions, so. Thank you. That's all I have this evening. May I get a motion to adjourn?
Chair, I move that the school board meeting adjourn.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens and a second by Mrs. Brooks. The school board meeting adjourned. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, seven, zero. Thank you. We are adjourned.